I'll order the meeting of the Greenwood Common Council on Monday, April the 7th at 7:00 PM. If you would please stand with me for the Fledge of Allegiance. After the pledge, please remain standing and will declare this evening by Pastor Guy Salaric from Crossroads Baptist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's pray. Our heavenly Father, thank you for the council and the people that are here tonight. And what I pray to do, give them wisdom in this meeting. Or thank you for the public servants that protect us much over us or be with them. This is the penning ceremony. And we're just saying to you that we can work together as friends and family. And we just ask for your blessing on this meeting now in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you, may be seated. Roll call.
Campbell.
Here.
Gibson. Here. Hills, the pastor. Hopper.
Here.
Cash. Here. Lexi.
Here.
Manship. Here. Mo.
Here.
And Williams.
Here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We do have a quorum, and just for the record, Mr. Williams is attending the meeting virtually this evening. All of you should receive copies of our minutes from the regular meeting on March 17th. Do you have a motion? Motion for Mr. Lexi, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Manship. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Do you have any, and roll call on the minutes?
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson. Aye. Hopper.
Aye.
Cash. Abstain. Lexi.
Aye.
Manship. Aye. And Mo.
Aye.
And Williams.
Abstain.
It gives us a five, which is five zero with two extensions. Minutes are approved. Reports, Corporation Council.
Corporation Council has nothing to report.
The Controller. Right.
Good evening. You should have all received this package here. This is the RBC's Temp Management Report. It is required by state law, but if you can hand it to the council prior to being filed, there's no action required. The RBC will ask to go on at their next meeting.
All right. Do you have anything else you'd like to share with us today?
I do have a little bit of presentation. If you don't mind.
Yes, run ahead.
This is a presentation regarding resolution that's on your agenda later this evening about property tax reform bill. There was some very bad news that came out of the city today from our point of view. I'll get into that when we go forward. So first slide here, I'm going to read through everything, but this is just kind of a history of how we got up to this point, talking about what the Senate version of the bill actually looked like. I thought it was really important to remind everyone what they get for these property tax dollars. I hear a lot of talk about how taxes are too high or, you know, their spending is inappropriate. So I did want to point out the things that are funded with property taxes in Greenwood. You can see our Greenwood Police Department had nearly 30,000 calls for service last year. Greenwood Fire had 9,400 calls for service last year. Our building and construction inspections were performed, 5,400. Fleet maintenance on over 1,500 procedures. Parks and Rec maintain over 17 parks covering 400 acres as well as 50 miles of trails. You can see all these stats on Freedom Springs, Community Center, Community Events. One, I think people may not realize COVID forces funded in the General Fund through your property tax dollars, they cited 3,800 people last year. Additionally, you have all the departments within the General Fund that support all of those operations and also are providing benefits to citizens from the financial department, legal department, HR, IT, and then you've got the elected folks at the city courts, the city courts office, and the city council, and the mayor that are also funded through property taxes. It's not an exhaustive list, but I do want to remind everyone that there's a lot that gets taken care of with those property tax dollars. So this was the effects of Senate Bill 1 as it came out of the Senate on Greenwood. Essentially, we would have levy losses in '26, '27, and '28 because of the ML2Q limitations, the maximum levy growth limitations. Cumulatively, that's 3.7 billion. However, as we've talked about when we talked levy appeals, that loss is compounded every year because your property tax growth is based on the year before's property taxes. So losing that also means you never catch back up with that. Again, listing out some of the things that pays for, as far as how Greenwood affected under this bill. Loss of growth doesn't necessarily mean budget cuts. So losing that budget growth didn't necessarily mean budget cuts. What it means is if the cost of other things go up, you have to eliminate the costs of things you can control. The things we can control generally revolve around salary increases. We can't control the utilities, the budget, or the health benefit increases, fuel costs. So, you know, that's who suffers at the end is our employees. You can also delay maintenance or repair. Bad part of that is things fall apart sooner and you've got to replace it. Decreases to staffing if it gets really bad. Asking employees to pay more than their benefits costs. Right now, it's a 90-10 split. It's very good for the employees and we don't want to change that, but that loss could potentially lead to that in the future. And then also reduction of service loss, just simply because you don't have staff to respond. There was one other thing that I thought, well, they were eliminating the three-year growth appeal, which is bad for anybody that's growing quickly. That has benefited us the last couple of years. And we wouldn't have been able to hire the additional full firefighters that were added to staff Station 95 without that levy appeal. So I do think that that's a dangerous thing to take away. And then finally, it adds an additional public hearing for the budget. So rather than having the public budget hearing during a normal council meeting, we would be required to hold a separate council meeting, which is specifically for the budget only, to have a public hearing on the budget. So we'd have to have an extra meeting, put it in, just for bureaucracy. I did a little bit of math here to kind of show you what the effects of this version would have been. So I started with our highest rate tax district. That is the Greenwood City Pleasant Township, Park Pleasant Schools District, District 25. The rate in that district cumulatively is 2.3936. Greenwood is less than 70 cents at that rate, by the way. That 156,000, anything above that is getting a circuit breaker deduction. So that's where I cut that off because if you are at 156,000 or less, you will see an increase in your tax bill no matter what happens with Senate Bill 1. So if the AD grows, your bill grows, no matter what they do with Senate Bill 1. But I did want to show that there's potentially tax rates or tax bills going up even when rates go down.
Hey Greg, will you go back and repeat that, how this impacts people with more modest incomes than...
Yes, so the big takeaway is if you are at 156,000 or above, your circuit breakers kick in, you're locked in at just that 1%. If you're below that number, you may be pushed higher because you're going to have to pick up some of that rate difference caused by the circuit. So the people that are going to see a change in their bills going up will be the ones that aren't already at the cap. They'll see a bigger change. And that's going to be the effect of what they did today, and I'll try to explain that a little bit as I get further in. This one is our lowest tax rate district. Greenwood City, White River Township, Greenwood Schools County Library. That's the lowest tax rate district for us, 1.8211. You don't hit the circuit breaker gap until 391,000 in that one. So basically, everybody below that number will likely see more increases than people above it who are in the tax caps. However much your AD grows in the next year will also determine how much your bill might change if you're already at the cap. That's the only thing that affects it. If you're not at the cap, you get the full impact of whatever that changes. So House Bill 1402, when I prepared this, was not yet inserted into the bill, but it has since been inserted. And the House Ways and Means Committee today did amend SB 1, take out all the Senate language and put this language in. First thing it does is eliminate homestead deductions and supplemental deductions because it is creating new deductions. A 2/3 deduction for the 1% residential homestead property, 1/3 for 2% property, and then there's also the elimination of the business personal property tax. Those changes will result in a loss of $1.3 billion in our net assessed value. What that results in is a tax rate that has to increase. That will push the tax rate up approximately 41%, just for us. That's not including everybody else in the county that contributes to your bill. That's just the Greenwood 70 cent rate. Will also cause our circuit breakers to go up. We were predicting approximately $6.9 million in lost revenues because of this change. This was provided to us from an analysis done by REDE Financial Group for AIM. Properties already at the tax cap will not see an impact. Properties below the tax cap will get pushed to the tax cap. In fact, today Representative Thompson, the chairman of the House Ways and Means Committee, said that that was his intention, was that everyone will be at their tax cap. And so any rate above $3 anywhere will not generate new money. I'll get into that later, why that matters. This one does include an option for a replacement revenue. So first and foremost, it takes the entire local income tax system and throws it out, unless you have a special Geo rate or something like that. Then it institutes a maximum 2.9% rate, which will be split as follows. 1.2% maximum for the county home, 1.2% maximum for the cities and towns that are above $3,500 or 3,500 population. You can adopt that as municipality. 0.4% optional fire EMS and 0.2% optional other units, not including schools. So the county, the fire EMS, and the other units would all have to be adopted at the county council level. The city one, because of our population, would be adopted by this council. So in order to recover the lost levy and income tax number, that 6.9 billion, the council would need to implement a municipal let of 0.87%. Not knowing what the county will need to do, or whether they will adopt the fire EMS, or whether they will adopt the other units, I can't tell you what the final rate would be, but chances are it will be higher than the current income tax rate. The net of that is eliminating the business personal property tax will significantly reduce property tax bills for businesses that have a large equipment investment, whether that's warehouses with large sorting, whether that is trucks, tractors, whatever it is. They will see a significant tax decrease from that business personal property elimination, but then the residents and working people will see an increase to their income tax in order to make up the difference. And then today, meeting came along. In addition to the language just talked about, there's a $200 tax credit for each residential homestead property. This is basically going to work similar to the circuit breaker taxes in that once they figure out how much is being deducted, they'll just distribute it over all the units that get those tax dollars equally. So more levy off from that 6.9 will lose even more. They did expand the over 65 disabled or disabled veteran tax relief. They increased the eligibility cap and turned that into a credit rather than an AD deduction. The language in SB 518 regarding school property tax sharing with charter schools was also roped into this bill. Even though it was adopted out of committee today and sent to the House floor, no fiscal impacts had yet been released. In fact, the language of the bill was not released until this morning, just before the committee. So net effects, new deductions, business personal property lowering means lower net assessed values, means higher tax rates, means more people hitting the tax cap. The people most affected by that will be the ones currently below the tax cap, usually the people of the lower modern needs. Representative Thompson made a comment also that he wants to eliminate the ability to use general obligation bonds. Because by assuring that everyone is at the tax cap and that $3 rate would generate no new tax dollars, if you wanted to issue a general obligation bond, you would have to give up money off of your operating limits in order to do so. Otherwise, there would be no new money generated. So you just lose more circuit breaker taxes than I'll say. I will say that's going to depress growth for us. We funded many things to Geo bonds. A lot of road grading has been funded just in the last two, three years. We bought two fire engines and a ladder truck in the last several years out of Geo bond money. Dump trucks, bought 16 police cars. I included another end up that's just the public safety impacts that kind of goes into the exact dollar amount on that, just so that we can see that, you know, the funds that are property tax supported, the biggest part of those funds supports public safety. And if there are big cuts to those funds, at some point, it's going to affect public safety. And so we just want to reiterate to our representatives at State House that this is going to make things a lot harder for development, for adding, you know, any annexation or adding of housing we do and needing to expand services. There won't be any dollars for that. So think about our need to expand and add another fire station, Station 95. This goes into effect, the only way to fund that is to take away operating dollars either in a Geo bond, or we can fund the construction, but then our operating budget, you'd have money still there to fund four stations that we have now, but because we can't really increase our dollars, we have to pay for maintaining and taking care of five stations with four station money. As far as impacts to the actual taxpayers, I'll just jump to the bottom one there. Like I said, everybody's going to be at the tax cap once they get it fully phased in. Most of the benefits of that bill are going to go to those businesses with big personal property investments. For Greenwood, like I said, that's a big number, but there are some communities that are much larger. I know the city of Whiting was mentioned in one of our meetings that over 70% of their assessed value is tied up in business personal property. So there's going to be big impacts statewide. And essentially, like I said, this is designed to take burden of taxes off of property over to income, but the properties most benefiting will be those business personal property. Finally, I want to close with the reasons we have always used property taxes to support local government. It's because it's a stable revenue source. It does not respond immediately to economic factors. If we are more heavily income tax supported, what will happen when we have recessionary periods is that those dollars will stop coming in right off the bat. So we will have to react to those losses and start cuts immediately. With the property taxes, you get at least a year before it starts affecting property values, maybe more, and also it phases in because the bills are based on what was assessed the prior year. So the timing of it drags it out longer so we have time to react. Finally, just thanks to AIM and REDE Financial for putting together the fiscal impacts, City Stat providing all those stats on their operations, and then also to the council for considering resolution.
Thank you, Greg. All right, any other committee or board reports? As was mentioned earlier, the RDC hasn't met yet this year. We will be meeting tomorrow. All right, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have Mr. Bad News, I want to bring some good news. Chief Paul Shell.
Yeah, good evening, Council, Chief Paul Shell, Fire Chief. We did have some celebration tonight. We have swearing in of two new promoted officers. Mayor has been kind enough to do the swearing in for us.
I could have Nicholas Beeman come forward, please. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Hi Nicholas Beeman. Having been appointed to the position of Lieutenant for the Greenwood Fire Department, having been appointed to the position of Lieutenant for the Greenwood Fire Department, swear that I will obey and enforce all the laws of the United States of America and the state of Indiana and the ordinances of the city of Greenwood and the rules and regulations of the Greenwood Fire Department. That I will obey all the lawful orders of my superior officers, faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability. Congratulations, Senator. To go there.
Right, go.
Steven Jacob. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Hi Steven Jacob. Hi Steven Jacob. Having been appointed to the position of Battalion Chief, for the Greenwood Fire Department, swear that I will obey and enforce all the laws of the United States of America and the state of Indiana, the ordinances of the city of Greenwood and the rules and regulations of the Greenwood Fire Department. And that I will obey all the lawful orders of my superior officers, that I will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability. Congratulations, Chief.
All right, thank you. All right. Moving on in your agenda, and we have more business to conduct. If you'd like to stay, Greg, if not, you're welcome to leave. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council concerning items that are on tonight's agenda. So if you'd like to do so, open step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and there is a five-minute time limit per person.
Good evening, council members. Randy Gooden, 1157, Park Boulevard, South Greenwood, Indiana 46143. I just want to ask for a little bit of clarification on a couple items that are on the agenda tonight. The equitable impact fee, when I was reading this, and I'm going to have to here, there's a section toward the past and speeds under here. And I think it'd just be beneficial for the general public if we can have a little bit better understanding what these are, how these are going to be collected, who they will impact, just who's on the record so people listening can have a better understanding of how this is going to impact them. Mr. Wright, very good job. I appreciate all that information, I honestly do. I had this discussed earlier today, and I'm like, oh my gosh, this is so phenomenal. And to hear how this is going to benefit business and harm the public is a little upsetting, especially when the battles we fought over the last several years for tip districts and trying to reduce some of these things that they take huge advantage of. And I can see our real impact on the services provided to the city. And again, Mr. Wright, I commend you for what you've put together here. All I would ask on that is if it could be uploaded to the city's website, again, so that citizens can look at this and understand it a little bit better. One for presentation, one for information. I'm just, as a citizen, trying to understand better myself. And I know many citizens approach me and try and get a better understanding. Just come now. Thank you for your time.
Do you want us to address the council this time? Seeing that, moving on, ordinances and resolutions. Notice of intent to consider, ordinance number 20, ordinance number 2510.
An ordinance to establish an equitable impact fee for the purpose of planning and financing park and recreational infrastructure to serve new development in the city of Greenwood, sponsored by Campbell's.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Gibson, second. Second by Mr. Lexi.
Yes, Rob Taggart, I'm the Director of Parks and Recreation. In five years, we renew our recreational impact fees. Reparation, recreational impact fees are assessed on new development that are built within the city corporate limits. And the fees are to ensure that we're maintaining our level of service for recreational impact. Side of things, impact fees do not cover current deficiencies. Impact fees cover future deficiencies based off of projected growth. As I said, we renew these every five years. We hire a consultant, Laven Layman, which now is transferred to the three. And Mr. Laven is here to answer any questions. And Mr. Layman is here to answer any questions that you guys may have regarding the impact.
Any questions this time?
Well, I noticed that was new probably. I guess that was the correlation between GDP and automatic increases. Is that the first time we've done that?
Well, we, it has been a minimal increase every time we study. Again, it's based off of projected growth and the efficiency that's created.
Just one question that has come to me. I think I mentioned it prior to me. This is fee will only be on new construction, existing homes, basically they've already paid it.
Correct, it is only for new construction.
Any other questions in the council?
I do have one. Because the last ordinance was in 2020 and we're redoing this, this fee. And it's attached somehow to GDP growth, right? So that's how we measure the increases year by year. What is the, what is the current fee from last year for 100%?
So top of my head is right around $1700.
So the increase, this new rate would be commensurate with that year over year growth.
Correct, there will be a, will be an annual inflationary increase that's built into it.
Any other questions? Appreciate any discussion on the council? Hearing none, the roll call ordinance number 2510. Ordinance 2510 passes and will go to seven to zero. First reading ordinance number 2509.
An ordinance opposing municipal real tax and motor vehicle license exercise tax and creating the city of Greenwood Real Tax Fund and the city of Greenwood Motor Vehicle License Exercise Tax sponsored by the entire council.
Do I have a motion? Ms. Gibson, second. Second, Mr. Moon. The purpose of this ordinance is because of a bill that's moving through the State House right now.
So that bill has not yet moved out of committee. I would say that we still have the option to delay second reading until it comes. So rather than going before it passes out of committee or passes down to the House. You know, we can, we can still hold off on second reading.
Okay, well, it goes, just so the public knows, this bill's being really forced on us by the state. And so if they don't pass that bill, then we won't be forced to do this. All right, any questions on the council? Hearing none, then roll call, first reading ordinance 2509. All right, ordinance 2509 passes first reading seven zero. Second reading ordinance 25, sorry, resolution 2504.
A resolution approving an interlocal agreement between the city of Greenwood and the city of Columbus regarding fire protection sponsored by Moon.
Yeah, I kept forgetting to count Mr. Williams' vote. So the vote on ordinance 2510 is eight to zero. And on 2509 is also eight to zero. Sorry, Mr. Williams. All right. We are on resolution 2504. Did we get a motion? So, so Mr. Moon, second by Mr. Hopper. Sorry, gentlemen, ladies. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, then roll call, second reading, resolution 2504.
Hopper.
Aye.
Cash. Hi. Lexi. Mansion. Hi.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye. Resolution 2504 passes second reading eight to zero. New business introduction, new ordinances and resolutions, ordinance number 2511.
An ordinance amending the 2025 salary ordinance, common council ordinance 2427 to add an additional administrative assistant position and eliminate the permit technician administrative support position and department of community development services sponsored by Hopper.
That's right.
Yes, so this is a bit of an administrative thing in that that permit tech position was supporting our city works. We have now hired a city works administrator and that person is no longer needed to do that work. So their work will be the same as the current administrative assistant. So what we would like to do is convert that position salary ordinance to an administrative assistant and pay that commensurately.
But is salary the same, they change it slightly?
If council is willing, we would like to request suspension so that it can be done sooner, but that's up to council.
All right. So a motion by Ms. Gibson, suspend the rules on ordinance 2511 through first reading. Do you have a second? Do you have a second by Ms. Cash? Any discussion on suspensions? Hearing none, the roll call, suspension rules through first reading ordinance 2511. Rules are suspended through first reading vote of eight to zero. Do you have a motion on first reading? Motion by Ms. Gibson, second. Second by Mr. Hopper. Any discussion? Hearing none, then roll call, ordinance 2511, first reading. Ordinance 2511 passes first reading eight to zero. Do you have a motion on second, suspension on second reading? Motion by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Lexie. Any discussion on suspension through second reading? Hearing none, then roll call, suspension of ordinance 25, suspension of the rules, ordinance 2511 through second reading. Rules are suspended through second reading on a vote of eight to zero. Do you have a motion on second reading? Motion by Mr. Lexie, second by Mr. Hopper. Any discussion? Hearing none, then roll call, ordinance 2511, second reading. Ordinance 2511 passes second reading eight to zero. Thank you, Mr. Wright. Ordinance 2512.
An ordinance providing for additional appropriations from the general fund to information technology budget qualification in 429 and 439 sponsored by Moon.
So as you all may or may not be aware, we've had a lot of issues with the network here at the city recently. A lot of it is because it is older equipment that has been cobbled together at different times where there were different amounts of money available to do it. So some of them are not good quality, some of them are somewhat better quality. So we got a quote from our IT provider to basically overhaul the network in order to to address these issues and nip them in the bud rather than trying to piecemeal the thing back together. So what we're requesting here would be sufficient for the switches that they're looking to do, the firewalls that would be installed with those, as well as some of the other operating software. And then the labor, which is the fourth and ninth section.
Are there any questions?
Mr. Wright, do we need to suspend the rules on this so that they can be moved forward?
With an additional appropriation, we do have to have the public hearing at the next meeting. But we could at that meeting do first and second reading both, that would be.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, this is resolution 2505.
A resolution opposing property tax legislation that impacts local government without revenue stream replacement sponsored by Campbell and Gibson.
I think we've already had a presentation. And any questions for Mr. Wright about that at this time?
We would ask for suspension on this one so that the mayor is going to be down at the State House tomorrow at a name event. He'd like to be able to present to our representatives, the council as well.
All right, and I entertain a motion to suspend the rules through first reading on resolution 2505. Close my Ms. Gibson, second. Second by Ms. Cash. Any discussion on suspension? Hearing none, then roll call, suspension of the rules through first reading, resolution 2505. Rules are suspended through first reading vote of eight to zero. Do you have a motion on first reading? Motion by Ms. Gibson, second by Mr. Lexie. Any discussion? Hearing none, then roll call, resolution 2505, first reading. Resolution 2505 passes first reading eight zero. Do you have a motion on suspension through second reading? Motion by Ms. Gibson, second, second by Ms. Cash. Any discussion on suspension? Hearing none, then roll call, suspension rules through second reading, resolution 2505. Rules are suspended through second reading vote of eight to zero. Do you have a motion on second reading? Motion by Ms. Gibson, second. Second by Ms. Mansion. Motion by Ms. Cash, is that right? Okay, then any discussion on resolution 2505? All right, roll call, resolution 2505, second reading. Resolution 2505 passes second reading eight to zero. All right, miscellaneous business, this is the second opportunity for members of the public to address the council concerning items this time that are not on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to do so, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Hearing none, and we'll move on. I have one item before we get into the stuff that's on the agenda under council miscellaneous business. I think I sent you all an email today about our need to appoint someone to the Police Merritt Commission. And a name was given to us. I think it came from another Merritt Commission member through the police chief. Her name is Tricia Thompson. The lady who's leaving is a Democrat. We have, we have two appointees, one is a Democrat, one has to be Republican. And so I asked Tricia if she was a Democrat, she said yes. She lives in Greenwood, she lives at AK Oakwood, I believe. And she is, I think I sent you a little bit of a bio on her. She has a business degree from Indiana University. She works with, as a program manager for First Indiana Robotics. And I also had another email from her as well stating that she has worked in human resources, which gives her some, a little bit of background into dealing with the Merritt Commission. So it is a four year term and so it would expire four years from today. Any questions? She is, Tricia, are you here tonight? Any questions? All right, Mr. Hopper nominates Tricia Thompson to be our appointee to the Police Merritt Commission. Do you have a second? Second by Ms. Gibson. All right, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed? All right, I will notify her and I appreciate that and I'm sure the Merritt Commission will as well. First thing is the consideration of termination of NACI American Incorporated tax abatements and send it in public hearing. How that process works is that we have a letter that I will need you all to authorize me to sign on behalf of the council. I believe it was included on SharePoint, but in case you haven't seen it, basically says the city of Greenwood has received notice from NACI dated March 19, announcing their closure of the Greenwood operations as of the end of this year. And the separation of their employees beginning at the end of May. And they have three or four, I think, open tax abatements with us. And this puts all of them in jeopardy. This letter invites them to come to our council meeting on April the 21st and present their case if they so choose to keep those tax abatements or any one or more than one of them. So I would entertain a motion at this point to authorize me to sign this letter and send it to NACI. Motion, Mr. Hopper, do you have a second? Second by Mr. Moon. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed? Right, thank you. And we will get that off here soon, probably tomorrow.
Mr. President, before you start on the CF1s, I wasn't quick enough to. I just want to make everyone aware that Greenwood Village had a problem Wednesday evening about 10:30 with part of their roof being damaged and removed. And it was called in through the fire and police. And I was told by the executive director and by many of the residents down there that the police and fire did an outstanding job. And when you have older people that have something like that that happens, they don't always do well with it. And we had no one that got upset. And everyone was extremely pleased and talked about how great your departments did. So thank you very much for that. And everyone's been displaced, is already in a new assignment in the village. So thank you very much.
Very good, thank you. Anything else miscellaneous business for the council? All right, we have nine CF1s to approve. Any questions on anything before we start working ourselves through?
Yeah, probably won't make a question for number five.
Okay.
I think I figured out one or two.
Okay, all right. All right, did I entertain a motion for number one? Motion, Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Lexie. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed? Proved unanimously. Motion, Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Lexie. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed? Thank you. And just for the record, I believe Mr. Williams is in California and he's no longer with us. He's no longer attending the meeting personally, so. Yeah, so I just want to make that clear at this point. All right, number three. By number three. Motion, Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Lexie. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion, Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Lexie. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed?
Again, number five. Looks like a typo, 630 jobs last year, 29 million salary, down to 170, maybe it's not. But I'd be like a little more info on what's going on.
Okay. Okay. We need to find a explanation.
Either explains it, and if we need to come in, we can do that.
Yeah. All right, number six.
I'll find number six.
Sir, motion, Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Lexi. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passed unanimously.
By number seven, substantial complaints.
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Lexi. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passed unanimously.
By number eight, substantial complaints.
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Lexi. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passed unanimously.
I'll find, looks like they have an insertion, maybe. But I'll find number nine, substantial complaints.
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Lexi. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passed unanimously. And we will get more information on the five. Anything else from the council? Anything for the Corporation Council?
Corporation Council.
Anything else from the controller?
I think you're tired of me by now.
Mr. Mayor.
I just want to reiterate to all of you again about Senate Bill One, House Bill fourteen-oh-two. They're formidable for the city. You've been provided with all the local legislators' phone numbers. I strongly encourage you to call them tonight, because they're going to rule on it tomorrow. Please ask them to oppose this because it will hurt us horribly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, we are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.